Okay, we're at 5:30, so I'd like to ask everyone to take their seats. And I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dahlkember?
Here.
Ms. Fowman?
Here.
Mr. Newker?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Witt?
Here. Is there a motion to approve today's meeting agenda?
Mr. Witt, I move that the Board of Education approves the agenda for the special meeting of October 16, 2014, as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Dahlkember?
Yes.
Ms. Fowman?
Yes.
Mr. Newker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes. Tonight, we have three items on the discussion agenda. To start off, the Board of Education will receive an update on student achievement for the 2013-2014 school year from Dr. Sina Morgan, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Carol Eaton, Executive Director of Instructional Data in Educational Research and Design. Annually, the Board of Education has requested a monitoring report on student achievement from district administration. Results from the administration of the 2013-2014 state assessments, including TCAP and ACT, from the District Performance Framework, and the graduation and dropout rates will now be formally presented to the Board. Dr. Morgan?
So, as they're preparing, I'd like to say a couple remarks, if I could. This presentation is lined up with the current Board ends, 1 through 3. There may be other data to consider, and we certainly want to make sure that we hear those points, but wanted to be clear that we're trying to line up this presentation with 1 through 3. Like any big organization, talking about averages across a large sample cancels out performances on either end of the spectrum. I wanted you to know that there are great conversations happening at the building level when they engage in their data at their school and the school improvement processes. There are both ends of the performances to consider in this presentation. These will be illustrated when we get to the District Performance Framework. That should be in your packet. I wanted to give you some samples, some of the data that you'll see tonight. On the positive side, over the last three years, Jeffco showed good growth in the numbers of advanced and proficient students in 4th grade writing, 9th grade writing, 8th grade math, and 9th grade math. That said, over the last three years, Jeffco has shown a decline in the numbers of advanced and proficient in 5th grade writing and 6th grade math. In addition, we recognize there's significant academic growth gaps for various groups. It still persists, and disaggregated graduation rates need to continue to improve. There are peaks and valleys in this overall performance, while better than the state has been flat over time. Next week, SPAC will be working on the district UIP. That's the next step in this process of considering this data. Through the conversation tonight here, there may be some additional data points that you want us to make sure we consider in that discussion. With that, I want to introduce Dr. Sina Morgan.
Hello? Woo! We're testing out the new equipment. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you an update on the Board ends 1, 2, and 3. Dr. Carol Eaton will go through the presentation, looking at the results for each of those ends, and then I will conclude the presentation with some recommendations for consideration of next steps in updating the board targets.
Hello, testing? Good. So, this presentation, I'll go through pretty quickly. You have seen it, hopefully been able to review it, so I'll just give you highlights in a quick presentation and save the time for questions. Okay, so, the review of 2014 district achievement data has been organized by the Board ends, starting with ends 1. So, every student will master the Colorado content standards at grade level. So, looking at the ends 1 targets, the first two were developed for August 2015 reporting, so we provided August 2014 TCAP results as an interim measure to show how we were doing. And you can see that the results for 3rd grade TCAP reading and 4th grade TCAP math show a lack of progress toward the target. For the TCAP writing targets, middle level met that target, with 66% of students advanced and proficient, and elementary and high school targets were not met. This chart shows Jeffco TCAP reading scores across all grade levels over three years. That's our next slide. Elementary trends are slightly flat or down, except for 5th grade, while middle school shows slight improvement. High school trended lower in 2014. Next graph shows 2014 advanced proficient TCAP reading performance for grades 3 through 10. Jeffco is represented by the blue bar and Colorado by the red bar. Jeffco exceeded the state TCAP advanced proficient performance for every grade level in reading. So, now, moving on to our 2014 TCAP writing performance, we trended down or stable compared to previous years. And compared to statewide results, Jeffco continues to exceed Colorado for TCAP advanced proficient performance at every grade level. Turning to math, Jeffco demonstrated improvement in grades 7 through 9 for the three-year trend, and elementary performance showed slight declines, except for 3rd grade. And this graph shows the comparison between Jeffco and the state, and note that the gap widens in secondary, with Jeffco outpacing the state at wider margins at secondary. TCAP data has been provided to all schools disaggregated by subgroups for analysis, and in the interest of time, subgroups reading have been included in the presentation. However, all of the slides are at the end of your PowerPoint. So, this slide shows the advanced proficient performance of English language learners across all grade levels in reading. Non-English proficient students perform lower, and they do not have the language skills to assess the assessment, but fluent English proficient students perform relatively well. Now, moving to our special education students and our free and reduced lunch, this graph shows both, from 3rd through 10th grade for reading. And the next graph is our gifted and talented performance, and it shows the advanced proficient TCAP reading performance for students with advanced learning plans. For all of these subgroups, there are extensive additional reports for schools and departments to analyze, and we've only included an overview of what's available. So, there are breakdowns by performance level, and match cohorts, and gifted and talented strength areas, and only advanced for gifted and talented. There's a great deal of data, and we've given you a high-level summary for this analysis. When we go to SPAC next week, we plan to give them a much greater depth in the data so that they can look at it and identify some major improvement, major performance challenges that we need to work on. Okay, so, now, turning to Board ends policy 2. Every student will achieve one year's growth or more as needed to catch up in each year of school and be ready for the next level. We look again at the Board's targets for this ends, and this slide shows that one target was met for the gifted and talented students in writing, and the rest of the targets were not met. And now, looking at our median growth percentiles as a district, 50, as you know, is defined as typical growth by the state, and Jeffco's 2014 growth data met or exceeded typical and continued to demonstrate strong growth in math. The next series of slides show TCAP median growth performance across school districts. This slide shows elementary reading growth, and Jeffco's at the 58th median growth percentile, and that exceeded all metro Denver districts. Jeffco's elementary writing growth at the 55th percentile ranked higher compared to most districts. And then, looking at elementary math, Jeffco performed at the 56th percentile, ranking second with Littleton Public Schools. Jeffco's middle level growth in reading matched the state's typical percentile, and writing, however, fell below typical at the 48th percentile for middle level. And our math growth ranked third for middle schools at the 54th percentile. For high school, literacy growth ranked lower at the 46th percentile in reading and the 47th percentile in writing. Math, on the other hand, reached the 54th percentile for high school growth, ranking second compared to other metro Denver districts. This next slide shows directly the ends 2 goal, showing that the majority of students made typical or high growth in reading across all grade levels. So, 72% of students had higher typical reading growth in elementary schools, 2/3 had higher typical reading growth in middle schools, and about 6 out of 10 high school students had higher typical reading growth. Turning to writing, 7 in 10 elementary students demonstrated higher typical writing growth. Slightly less than 2/3 of middle and high school students demonstrated higher typical writing growth. And finally, looking at math, 71% of students had higher typical growth in elementary schools, 7 in 10 middle and high school students demonstrated higher typical math growth. The next slide shows our district benchmark assessment acuity. Form A is administered in the fall and Form C in the spring. So, the last column shows the difference between the two benchmarks, and you can see that gains were made at elementary in language arts and declines at high school in language And turning to mathematics acuity, you can see gains across all levels from the fall-to-spring This graph is probably a little difficult to read, but probably the easiest way to look at it is the color. Dibbles Next is one of the district's early reading assessments administered in kindergarten through 3rd grade. Green represents students meeting reading grade level expectations, and red are students well below reading benchmarks. So, you can see M, B O Y, beginning of year, and E O Y, end of year. And what you're looking at is, at the end of the year, there are fewer below-benchmark students, less red, and more at-benchmark students, more green, in all grade levels. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. Okay, and finally, Board ends policy 3. Every student will graduate career and workforce and/or post-secondary ready. The target there around remediation was met, with Jeffco decreasing the remediation rate. The next slide shows remediation rate comparisons with other metro districts and the state, and Jeffco outperforms all metro districts with similar or higher poverty rates, as well as some districts with lower poverty rates. For Colorado ACT, Jeffco continues to outperform the state's composite score, so you can see three years of data there. The next slide shows graduation rate, completion rate, and dropout rate trends, and we see a generally upward trend over time for graduation and completion rates, and a generally declining rate for dropout rates over time. Our advanced placement test performance is on this slide. The district's aggregate mean score exceeds state, national, and international comparisons, and additional data for advanced placement was provided at the end of the presentation for your review. Our district performance framework for 2014 shows the district is accredited, and the district unified improvement plan target results were included as additional slides at the end of the presentation. We will be providing those to SPAC to dig into more deeply.
One thing, we did provide the district performance framework, the full district performance framework, for your review. This is the compilation of all of the levels together and the points that were earned by the district as a whole.
For CDE's preliminary 2014 school performance frameworks, 83% of district schools received the highest type of plan assignment performance. After the SPF ratings are finalized, that percentage should increase as we see our AECs added to the graph and also some of our appeals that we are submitting for schools.
I wanted to conclude with recommendations for moving forward. So, the data that we've been looking at is primarily around the TCAP performance, and those assessments are no longer going to be administered by the state. This year, we will be taking, in ELA, we'll be taking PARC, in math, we'll be taking PARC. So, the data, CDE is going to make an attempt to do some correlational analyses. However, knowing that the targets have shifted and the assessments that will be measuring those targets have shifted, our recommendation is that we're able to present to you some predictive data, looking at our district benchmark data, the shift that's happened in that assessment. So, this year, our district benchmark assessment has shifted, and so it will have some reflective data on how we can look at future performance on different types of assessments. We can also look at performance on NAEP, and there's been analysis nationally of districts' performance on NAEP compared to their performance, anticipated performance on the PARC assessment, as well as being able to look at our performance on CMAS, Science and Social Studies, because those assessments have already been adapted to a different type of analysis of student learning. So, our recommendation is, with those different data points, you would be able to make a decision about what targets you would want to set for your board ends around the assessments that will be given this year, and to make those in relationship to the performance expectations that we would see. So, you'll see, I just took your board targets from this year, from last year, and put a placeholder for what that baseline expectation would be and the target you would want us to aspire to for this baseline year.
Any other presentation materials?
That's the conclusion of this part, but we want to answer all questions. We wanted to leave room for lots of questions.
Excellent, thank you. Well, with that, I'll try and let everybody take two or three questions around, and then we'll get a little more free form and make sure that we get as many questions addressed as we can. We have about an hour to do that, so I think we have plenty of time to delve into some of the subjects. Ms. Fowman?
Okay. Could you elaborate, Dr. Morgan, on when you said the benchmark data shifted? What does that mean?
So, the, if you had an opportunity to review the next presentation, and it talks about assessments can measure what students know, what students are able to do, and what students can use in different situations, the TCAP assessments measured focused primarily on what students know and what students can do. The new assessments are shifting to focusing on how students take their knowledge and skill and apply it to different types of learning situations. And so, acuity, in anticipation of that shift, has already shifted their assessment to have that more rigorous look at measuring students' thinking and their ability to take their skills and apply them to various situations.
Is acuity still predictive of success on CMAS?
On Science and Social Studies?
Well, I guess, on the PARC tests, is acuity predictive? Let me just leave it at that.
Because PARC has not ever been administered, there would not be an ability to predict until that they had a set of data that then they could do a correlational analysis on, but they're building in anticipation of, since there are some states who have already administered assessments that are at that higher rigor level.
Okay, great, thank you. Dr. Eaton, you said that we'll know more about the frameworks when the AECs and the appeals.
Appeals.
Appeals, thank you. That word just went right out of my head. When do you anticipate that happening?
We should receive the alternative education campus ratings by the end of this week, so by tomorrow. And then, the appeal process will not be finalized until December, so we have a little bit of time on that one.
All right, going to advanced placement. I know for a long time, we were, it was really a focus, making sure that kids would take the test. Do we have 100% of our kids taking the test? Is this data reflective of just the kids that are taking the test? Is it reflected of all kids? And so, if you're not taking the test, you get a zero? How is this data reflected?
This data is solely those who took the test.
Thank you.
So, it excludes non-testers.
Okay.
Ms. Dahlkember?
First, I just think there are some real celebrations to point out, and that's not to say that we don't have challenges, especially when we look at the achievement gap. But when you consider that Jeffco, like other districts, but Jeffco in particular, saw $75 million loss in funding due to the economic downturn, and poverty has increased, and then you look at one of those key data points, like remediation rates, that were outperforming districts with lower poverty rates, right, than what we currently have, I think that's really important to point out. I also think the AP mean score that you shared with us, pointing out that the district is outperforming Colorado, US, and global mean scores, I think is really important to note as well. One of the pieces I wanted to, one of the issues I wanted to circle back to is an issue that we here talked about in our community, and it has to do with high school math scores. And there is a concern that those high school math scores dip, and there are concerns about the numbers of kids who are proficient or advanced proficient. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that, because I know one of the concerns that has been raised is whether those tests cover material that kids have been taught prior to taking the test. Can you talk to us a little bit about how we ensure that the curriculum aligns with what kids are learning, or can you talk a little bit more about what that reflects?
When we're looking at, so there's several root causes to, and you'll see the trend in all of the content areas, that as students progress through the years, there tends to be a trend in a drop in TCAP performance. So, there's several root causes to that. One is that, in secondary, the shift expands beyond the standards, and so, in some cases, that straight correlation to the skills that are being assessed on the test may not be the content and the skills that the students have learned within that school year. So, the TCAP is very focused on a specific set of skills each year, and students have to take that assessment that year, regardless of whether they have taken that course that year, or they may have not taken that course yet, or they may have taken that course two years ago. So, one of the efforts in future assessment, testing, is that we align in secondary the tests that students are taking to the courses they've actually completed. So, that is an effort that's being made.
Great, thank you. The other issue I wanted to circle back to is AP courses, and just taking another look at that. When we look at high schools like Jefferson High School, and we've got 90% of students on free and reduced lunch at Jefferson High School, one of the concerns and the questions that I have about is, how do we ensure access and opportunity for students at schools like Jefferson, where you have high poverty, to ensure that they have access to AP courses just as students at other high schools may have? Because we know that that's such a critical piece, right, in terms of successfully graduating from college, being college-ready, and all those other components that come into play.
I think there's several considerations. One is that the opportunity to have access to those courses, we also know that to ensure that they have the scaffolding necessary to perform successfully in those courses. A third factor is, we also know that we want to focus on college and career connected versus college and career ready, because we can ready students, and we have, in our partnerships with higher ed, have learned that a lot of the students who actually do graduate and even have funding don't show up their freshman year in college. So, there would be an effort on our part to increase the amount of rigor and support there are for the students who may not have access or opportunity to those courses, but in addition, ensure that they understand the value of doing well in those courses. So, if I'm connected to career, I'm connected to college in my freshman year, if I understand the value of those courses, then I'm more likely to succeed in those courses.
Do we have specific strategies in place right now that address those very issues, helping to raise awareness among students that these courses are available, looking at those very issues in terms of access and opportunity?
We do. We have, through the Student Engagement Unit, we have efforts that are coordinated through the high schools. We also are working with different legislators who are focused on this issue and really want to ramp up the connection part early on, and there's business that's, we have a growing high-skill businesses in our city that can't find the workforce here, so they're having to go outside of Colorado. So, they're very much interested in partnering with high schools and enhancing the understanding and connection of our high school students to what careers are available right here in the Denver metro area.
Great, thank you.
To follow on the math question that Ms. Dahlkember asked earlier, we see a pretty significant year-to-year drop-off in math proficiency. We see some drop-off in math reading and writing, but it's significantly more pronounced in math. What are the underlying causes for math being so much more pronounced?
Part of it has to do with the rigor scale, so the focus on, the former assessments, and this is what the data is focused on, TCAP, which has been the assessments we've been being accountable to for the last decade. TCAP and then TCAP, those assessments were focused on the skills and the knowledge of math. In secondary, there's a shift to conceptual understanding of mathematics, and then you're using that, those concepts, to do different types of things. And so, what we see is that there's a rigor increase, and what we would want to do in response to that is begin that expectation of really students being able to think about the math, absolutely knowing how to do the knowledge and skills of math, but then being able to transfer that at a much earlier age.
So, how would you propose that we match our instruction to meet the increased rigor expectation that they're falling short of more pronouncedly in those higher grades?
My proposal would be that we are able to, we have some relief from the amount of external standardized testing, so that we're able to implement within our system assessments that are focused on students being able to take those knowledge and skills and really apply them to problem-solving, to be able to have that resiliency through a complex task. That would be my recommendation.
There was a question asked earlier about predictiveness of acuity. Press on that just a little bit. How predictive are our acuity tests of TCAP performance? Set aside PARC for a moment. How predictive are our acuity scores of our end-year assessment results?
We look at that every year, and what we've seen is, at the district level, high predictability between the TCAP and the acuity. What we're seeing now is increased rigor in that acuity assessment, and while we can't predict a test that hasn't been administered yet, we're anticipating, the CTB vendor has written items for PARC and Smarter Balance. They understand the new rigor, and they have applied it to the new acuity. So, we're anticipating that, while it may not be predictive of, well, we don't know yet how predictive, but we know that it is increased rigor, and we're seeing that as the window closes. We have schools that are saying, "Oh, how do I look compared to other schools? Because, wow, this is not where we used to be on acuity." So, we are seeing some changes in performance.
And we'd be happy to bring you those initial results when schools take the benchmark B, which is the middle-year benchmark. That's an optional benchmark, but for schools that are wanting to track that progress throughout the year, we could bring you a view of that to see the difference, if you were interested.
Okay, thank you. And to follow on that acuity question, why does acuity retrograde in the higher grades? We saw increase from beginning of year to end of year in most cases, but we saw retrograde in the higher grades. Why is that?
So, the drop in the amount of increase.
Yes.
I would say that we're suffering from a similar problem that we have with TCAP, and acuity is not measuring what I am learning in a course. It's an external assessment of a scope of skills that would typically be taught within a grade level, although, can they go outside of the grade level?
Not for the benchmark.
So, they're still stuck within a grade level, even though they may have taken the course or not taken the course. And that's a problem we have with external assessments and the flexibility of being able to really tailor the measurement to what the students have actually learned.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, a couple different things. So, the first one is on the page that talks about the dropout rate and trends. And so, as I add it up, and it talks about the 1.7% that's at a dropout, and then the top number of
And that's a problem we have with external assessments, and the flexibility of being able to really tailor the measurement to what the students have actually learned.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, a couple different things. So the first one is on the page that talks about the dropout rate and trends. And so as I add it up, and it talks about the 1.7% that's at a dropout, and then the top number of completion being 84.4, what about the other 13.9%? Where do they fall in this category?
Well, the beauty of the dropout rate and the graduation rate is they're calculated completely differently. So logic would think if they haven't graduated, they've dropped out. The graduation rate is, calculation is calculated in one way, and the dropout rate is calculated in another way. There's not a direct correlation between the two, but you can, well, and this is on-time graduation.
Yes. But then it also has completion date. So I'm still not understanding where the 13.9% of the children went.
Well, your question is assuming that the two calculations are interconnected, and they're not. So we can share those calculations with you, and you'll see that the graduation rate is looking at students who started in ninth grade, students that ended in 12th grade, and the dropout rate is looking at a similar calculation but a completely different view of that. So we would have to show you the calculation for, there is no connection between the two that you would logically think would be there. It's an interesting phenomenon.
And a student can return from a dropout and be counted as a dropout, and then return and graduate or not graduate. So, and the dropout rate starts in seventh grade and goes through 12th grade, and the grad rate starts in ninth grade and goes through 12th grade, so completely different measures and different students in a lot of ways.
And I understand your puzzle, because one would think that if they haven't graduated, they've dropped out, or they've completed, and the three calculations are done.
Yeah, that's very fuzzy math, and it would be nice if they could come together to have something that makes sense for everyone. Is that possible? Can you, yeah, let us know.
It's the state's calculation, but we can give you the way that they do that, and then we can try to work that out.
Okay.
And we can also, we track students, so we know whether they've graduated, or whether they've dropped out, or whether they've completed. And so every student is accounted for at the district level. In the state calculations, they are not connected. It's a very interesting way of.
Ms. Williams, can I press your question just a little? Because I really would like to understand, because it's driving me nuts, too. Can I just?
Let me ask one more question, then you can ask yours.
Okay.
What about kids that go through remediation, you know, for those extra transition three years? Where do they fall in here?
If you look at the district performance framework, so if you page into there, if you have that on your.
I don't know where it is. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So if you go to the Level High, which is maybe three, four pages in, you'll see that it actually shows the graduation rate, and it shows on time, then it shows fifth year, sixth year, seventh year. So it shows our graduation rates across the years.
Just to press your question a little, I'm not trying to introduce a new concept. Please give us an example of a student who would have neither dropped out nor graduated by your definitions.
Well, no.
Because there's a gap where there are students that are not being counted either way. Is there an example of one, can you give us an example of one that doesn't fall in either category?
What I'm explaining to you is that in the district, we can track where every student lands. The state calculations are not a matched calculation, so they're not, it's not an interconnected calculation of graduation, completion, and dropout. They use completely different calculations. So we could share those with you so that you could see what the logic is with those calculations, but they're not. And it's a logic that struggle, that we all struggle with in the sense of if we get to 100% graduation rate, will we still have dropout rates? And we will, because of the way the calculation is.
Is there a way you can give us the district data so that it does equal 100%, so that we can see how many kids have graduated, how many kids have completed, and how many kids have dropped out, so that we can look at a complete picture?
So you'd like to know where are all our kids?
So I understand that all this stuff is the state calculations. Can you do district calculations?
Well, and that would be very important for us to be able to provide as well, if our intent is to be college and career-connected, then not only would we want to know, you know, where did they land during their high school career, but also, were we able to connect them to a post-secondary and workforce option that they actually, when I went to a symposium about where students end up after their senior year, if they graduate, I talked to the Denver Community College, and 5,000 students in Colorado who were accepted and had funds did not show up. So it's important to us that we help connect our students to that next step.
I think one of my frustrations, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but is that because the state calculation, and I am convinced that there's somebody at the state that it makes sense to, it doesn't make sense to me, and I'm very much like what Ms. Williams would say, I want to see, you know, if you have a hole, you should be able to divide it into parts, and you still have a hole. And the calculation is just.
Yeah, we can bring that to you in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, did you have another question before we move to Mr. Newkirk?
The other question that I, I actually have two. With the PARK testing, and you talked about as you get to middle school, that when the kids do the test, they may have taken, for instance, algebra, you know, in sixth grade, and then they're tested in eighth grade on it, so it's been two years ago. Will the PARK testing differentiate between student and align to what they've learned that year or not?
It does at high school, and we have been pushing on the state to allow it to go down to middle school, and have they decided on eight yet?
In eighth grade, you can take algebra and geometry now if you're in those courses.
But if they already took it in sixth grade, my question is, is will the test align with what they've learned that year? Okay, so it doesn't. Okay. Then my other question has to do with the kids with the greatest growth gaps, the language proficiency, free and reduced lunch, and special ed. I mean, the difference between third grade to 10th grade is astounding. What can we be doing different in those areas? I mean, that's probably, as we look at all these different reports, we're 61, 70% proficient. There's 30% in almost every category for total kids that aren't proficient, and I bet you a huge portion of them lands in this big growth gap. And I can see where maybe they wouldn't do well on a standardized test if they're three years behind in their learning.
Absolutely. So part of the key importance is that we have a body of evidence that really demonstrates the student's actual level, so that we're able to instruct at the level they are. And if they are struggling students, then we, I call it performance plus, it's that, providing that instructional support so that they not only make a year's worth of growth, but they are behind, so they need to make that year's plus worth of performance gains. And so when we're talking about how they're then measured on accountability measures, it's the same problem. If I've taken geometry, and now you're assessing me, and two years later, it's the same with our struggling learners and being able to represent. So what we would, and one of the recommendations you'll see, is we would like to be able to report to you, here's what this data point, the state assessment is saying, but we want to also show you how our students are tracking. However, that is not to ever indicate that they shouldn't be able to catch up, and that's an important caveat, but if we're missing the local assessment view, then we're missing the view of those struggling learners, and then we can just keep throwing our hands up and say, well, it's not measuring what they're learning. Well, if we have assessments in place that measure what they're learning, and also have that performance plus intensity, then we can make those gains and actually close achievement gaps. And we have examples where achievement gaps are closing, and we have examples where achievement gaps are widening. And so the district view becomes that kind of gravitation to the mean, which is a problem.
I know from many parents that I've talked to over the years, that it's really frustrating when their children are on a completely different level, and they're taking the standardized test, that it's not very useful to them, and there's really only the two options, the COALT and the PARK or TCAP or whatever is being used that year. So it's not very useful, and especially from a parent's point of view of, to even understand it all. So if a parent's going to partner with their school and education, how can we help in that process?
Right. And we know that the intent initially of the state accountability assessments was to make sure that those students were just left to not have the instruction they needed. However, because it's very rigid within the grade span, it also isn't helpful. So we have to have those other perspectives. So our push is to reduce some of the demand of the external assessments, so the students can be taking assessments that are actually measuring what they're learning.
Mr. Newkirk?
First of all, thank you, Dr. Eaton and Dr. Morgan, for this exhaustive and broad presentation here. I wonder if I might presume upon you to get, it's a little more specific on some of these, and I have a lot of questions here, I'd be glad to email these to you later as well. But I appreciate that you have all the other Colorado districts on these charts. I think every one on this board that has gone on record is saying that we want to give our students a world-class education. So I wonder if it might be possible to start seeing how Jeffco compares to some of the other higher-performing districts across the country, and see how it goes that way. Is that something that you could give to us?
Well, we do have, the acuity measure is a measure that is given by districts across the nation. We also would be able to look at our performance on ACT compared to other districts and advanced placement. And also, we are interested in partnering with districts across the nation who are interested in measuring some of the more higher-order thinking skills, that we would be able to have that comparison. We also have a couple of high schools that have shown an interest in taking the OECD School-Based Assessment, which is the international assessment for schools, so that in the future, we would be interested in any high school that would like to have an international perspective would be able to do that as well.
Okay, and then let me focus on something that you just mentioned as far as the ACT goes. I tend to look at that as a broader measure of the whole system myself. So I noticed we went up from 21.2 to 21.5. That's great. But I'm wondering if you look at this in context, it looks like Colorado State University, CSU, is looking for a 22, and University of Colorado is looking for a 24. So would it be accurate to say that with our 21.5 average, that means half of our students wouldn't have an ACT score that these are looking for? And what could we do to improve that? Are we offering ACT prep classes? And could we see that some of these scores broken out by school, so we can see how each school is doing in that regard?
We can, and we would recommend that there would be, so that, one of the upcoming transitions in high school is the Endorsed Diploma, and it has multiple pathways for students to go into the area that they're interested in. So I have one, I have two children. One knew exactly what she wanted to do, she went down the pathway, she ended up in a art school and happy to be. I have another one who's a senior this year, has no idea, she's undecided, she didn't even think college was an option because she thought you had to know what you wanted to study in college. When she went to a college fair and found out they love undecided, she came home and said, hey, I can be undecided and go to college, duh. But the point I'm making is that we have students who have, know in high school that they want to go into the military. We have students who know in high school that they want to go to a tech school. We have students who in high school have no idea what they want to do. So the Endorsed Diploma offers the opportunity that ACT would be one assessment that you could take. My daughter took the ACT and the SAT. She said she much preferred the SAT because it was much more application versus knowledge-based, so she was able to really show and apply her skills. And she is a language arts kid, so she can write and express herself that way. So that would be, part of the answer to your question would be, yes, let's look at, what can we do to increase that college and career readiness on the ACT as well? Have multiple pathways so that students who have no interest in that pathway can actually demonstrate and excel on their pathway.
I think what's really useful about Colorado ACT is that we give it to all students in the state, and when you're comparing us nationally, there are many states who only have the students who are college-bound take that assessment. So when you look at our Colorado ACT for 11th graders, all 11th graders take it, and so all of our students in the state are represented, whereas when you compare that to other states, they're only looking at college-bound.
So for instance, when I was a principal in Oregon, we would pick a national testing date for SAT, and on that day, the students that wanted to take the SAT, that would be provided at our school. The students that didn't want to take that, we were partners with the military, and those students can go and take the ASVAB test. And so it was really trying to build based on the pathway of the student as opposed to everybody has to take this.
Right. And I do have a couple of questions about AP as well. You mentioned that our AP average score is 2.91, and is it, does it take a three to get college credit in general? I know that some colleges are even looking for a four these days. So is it accurate to state as well that if our average is a 2.91, then half of those that took the class and took the test will not be getting college credit for that? Is that the case?
Well, that would be the case, that the students whose exams were not a three would not get credit for those courses.
All right. And can you tell me a little bit about, I understand there's another, there's several others perhaps, CU Succeeds, for example. If they take that type of course, they get college credit for, do they also have to have a test at the end for that?
For the concurrent enrollment classes?
Right.
Do you want to speak to?
Sure. CU Succeeds is an outreach program from the University of Colorado, and the way that that works is they identify certain classes within a building, and they partner with that building to deliver that class. So they use the district's textbook. Usually what students will do is that they will pay a fee, and they will get that credit if they successfully complete that course. The course is graded, just like a regular high school course would be, it's a body of evidence across time, and there's no set test at the end. That's the difference between that and AP classes. There's other concurrent enrollment opportunities. For instance, Red Rocks Community College has some concurrent enrollment opportunities. In another district I was in, we had a very strong partnership with ACC and provided concurrent enrollment classes in our building, where we had teachers that met the criteria to be adjunct professors, so they had to have a master's in that specific area, so either math, or science, or English. And that teacher would teach that course, and it was, again, a body of evidence where the student would get both high school and college credit. Many of the CTE programs that we have at Warren Tech, both at North and at Central, are aligned with Red Rocks curriculum, so a student gets both high school and college credit through those as well. So there's multiple pathways for college credits that we have.
All right.
Just to follow up.
Clarification. So CU Succeeds, credit only works at University of Colorado?
I do not believe that's true. Any of these concurrent enrollment opportunities, it's really incumbent upon the student to check that out. Most of the programs nowadays, like through Red Rocks when they do concurrent enrollment, those will matriculate to other four-year universities, but there are some exceptions.
I know Red Rocks has done a lot of work to do partnership with four-years, but.
I've seen the CU Succeeds go to other schools. It's all dependent upon where you're going to go to school.
Sure.
My daughter had several CU Succeeds courses, and they transferred to the Savannah College of Art and Design. And she was able to pretty much completely not do freshman year because she had already done it.
Yeah, I remember when my daughter was in college, and she was given a choice of CU Succeeds or AP, which way to go. At that time, CU Succeeds was much less mobile than the AP, and she was looking out of state as well, and so AP was a better option for her, so that was what I was.
And so my daughter took the math course at Chapfield, that's a CU Succeeds course, and she went out of state as well, and they didn't give her the credit, but they gave her placement. And so that's another option, is you don't have to take that, you know, that's what some universities will do, is say, well, since you took this, we're not going to give you any credit for it, but you don't have to retake it for us.
Okay.
So if you look at the N's number three recommendation, some of your questions get at that. So when we look at the ACT, if we were going to, one of the recommendations for a target might be to look at score range movement. So there's ranges that are, that would afford a student the opportunity to go to certain schools. And then the next range is the range that would get you into the four-year university. And then the next range would get you into the elite schools. So that might be another consideration for a target would be, are we helping students to, are we moving students up in those ranges so that they have a broader access and opportunity to the post-secondary workforce readiness?
All right.
May I follow on that topic with a question?
Yes, sir.
In terms of concurrent enrollment, what are the concurrent enrollment opportunities in JFCO today for our students?
We'd have to research that question.
Can we get some information on what's out there?
Yeah, we can definitely get that for you. I do have one last question. As you know, we, this board last spring, we allocated additional millions of dollars for some literary coaches for our reading improvement goals. And so what I'd like to know is which schools in particular are showing the best progress in getting third graders to read? And which programs aren't showing the progress that we need? And how would you recommend that those change? And finally, are there any programs and workload that we are finding are not necessary? And are we evaluating how we might eliminate that so the workload reduces?
So we can, you have two options. We can bring you that information based on the beginning of your benchmark. So we have several assessments that those students are given at the beginning of the year. And we could look at the prior year to see if this first window of several months has made a difference. Or we could wait until we give the middle of your benchmarks and then we would have comparative points from point A, the beginning of this year to the middle of the year. And has that intensive support from that, the literacy initiative given us significant performance gains? So we can do either one.
Ms. Dahlkeber.
I have two quick follow-up questions. One is a question about writing. And that is an area that JFCO not only continues to struggle with, but we see struggle with writing statewide, right, across other districts. Can you talk to us a little bit more about what you see as some of the root causes behind those lower-performing numbers in writing? And any recommendations in terms of how to address that? Because we know that's such a critical and important skill.
Absolutely. So part of you, if you looked at the writing focus, part of what happens in the TCAP is that there's a focus on the prompt. And so one of the difficulties in taking that data and making some meaning of it is that, is it my response to the prompt that has determined my score? Or is it my skills in writing? So because of the way that the, it's a holistic writing score and it's looking at the different asked components of writing. What that has resulted in is in some instructional reaction, we, and I'm speaking for myself in understanding, I would react to, oh, I need to focus more in this direction because the prompt was heavy in making sure that I was organizing, my students were organizing their writing. And so I would focus on organizing in their writing. And then the next year's prompt steered students more towards voice and they needed to have stronger voice. And so then I'm swinging over here. So one of the transitions that's been incorporated into the way that students are going to demonstrate their writing is that they become efficient communicators. And so when we're measuring their writing, that it's not that back and forth around what is the intent of this particular prompt? It's around, are you able to effectively communicate through writing in both a technical way and also in a more creative way? That will require that we have a strong alignment to what those priority skills are in writing and being able to really target those. And so schools have spent a lot of effort in being able to articulate, what are those priority skills in the technical part of writing and in the creative part of writing so that I become an effective communicator? Whether I'm defending an argument or I'm writing about my summer vacation? Writing has been a moving target in so many respects and that flip-flop back and forth has been very frustrating to our schools and to our students because they feel like good writers. And then when they get their results from their performance on the state assessment, it's not reflecting their feeling necessarily. Or they feel like they're not good writers at all. And so it becomes very intimidating. And so that is a, that is a national issue of our students. Part of it is being able to be very thoughtful about how do you integrate digital tools with writing? And so students understand that it doesn't matter what the tool is you're using, that you are an effective communicator. And so there's not the excuse that you were using this digital tool so you don't have to be conscious of the organizational aspects and the creative aspects.
And then I wanted to follow up too, a little bit more on the conversation about AP and concurrent enrollment. And check me on this, but if I'm not mistaken, Douglas County just moved in the direction of concurrent enrollment only, right? And no longer AP courses?
No.
No?
No. What they did was that they have AP classes, which traditionally, we had tried to work with the community colleges around getting college credit concurrent enrollment with that, and they didn't want to do that. So they did go to Colorado Christian University and aligned AP courses with Colorado Christian University. So a student would have an option. They could either get the AP credit and take the AP test for transfer anywhere else that they wanted to go. Or they could go ahead and run very similarly as a concurrent enrollment class with Colorado Christian, get college credit that way for that AP course. But there's, I have heard nothing about canceling any AP courses there. It's actually, what it did was it provided another option for students around concurrent enrollment. So a kid could either say, I'm going out of state to a public school, so therefore at the end of this AP class, I'm going to go ahead and take the AP test and be able to transfer that into this public institution. Or I'm going to go to Colorado Christian University or I'm going to go to another like university and I'm going to go ahead and take the concurrent enrollment credit on a CCU transcript that can transfer to that college. Or the third option is take the AP class and get the weighted credit and then not be involved with getting, you know, trying to take the test at the end. So it was really to open up a different venue for students.
Yeah. My biggest concern is that we continue to have both tracks available and I know we've got some good concurrent enrollment opportunities. And I think one of the, just one really quick footnote on that is I think that we also have some opportunities for kids for five-year programs, but we don't see enrollment of as many students, I think, as we'd like to see at Red Rocks Community College or other community colleges that kids could have access to. So I think that might be another area for us to look at as well. I think most importantly, it's having lots of different pathways for our students, whether it's AP, concurrent enrollment, CENT or other kinds of programs like that.
So the ASCENT program, I know Sarah Heath is working on how we can encourage kids to jump into that program. And I think the best place to probably do that is with some of the students at Warren Tech, is why I've heard some of those conversations going on.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Ms. Selma, yeah.
I know that the previous math curriculum that was used by the district was a K-5. And quite often, when we look at curricular resources, we see K-5 and 6-8. I'm wondering if that's a reason that the sixth grade scores were dropped significantly? Or if you've got, if y'all looked at that? And the second is, is math expressions K-6 or is it just K-5?
I believe it's K-6. No? I don't know. Well, to answer the first part of your question, part of the disconnect is if the program dictates the curriculum, then there will be a huge misalignment.
Right.
But if the curriculum is instructed through multiple resources and we're aligned across learning progressions, then we won't have those huge gaps.
I know that in the past, when we would talk to a lot of teachers that were using the similar vocabulary and similar things, that we saw a real big trend of increased achievement. And was wondering how that may have impacted our sixth graders because sixth-grade teachers often went somewhere else for their connection with other teachers. And I didn't know if that was part of what was going on with the sixth grade drop.
Yeah, I'll check my phone because I'm sure Matt just texted me and said, it's sixth grade two.
So I do think that's a really interesting question too, especially when you have different formations of students. So you have K-5s, you have a couple of middle schools that are 6, 7, 8. You have K-8s. And I think it is all about language and expectation. And when you go from one building to another and that language changes, I think we both know that sometimes some of those pieces drop off. So I think we do need to be mindful of that as we move forward around how we can create that opportunity for students to become thinkers about math. And so the language doesn't necessarily hamper them as they're moving forward, but they understand big concepts that they can apply in any situation.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Well, that's a very good point because as we have, it's important for our schools to really be matching the, their instructional models to the needs of their students. And so we don't want to limit that. If we're consistent on what students should learn, then the resources don't have to be the same. But it requires that consistency about what students should know and be able to do.
Absolutely.
Ms. Williams?
So the curriculum really needs to align with the test for the kids to pass the test.
Well, the other way around. The assessments should measure what students are expected to know and be able to do.
But it doesn't sound like that's really happening, like when we get to middle school because kids are learning all different things and the test is standardized.
For the external state test, yes.
Yeah. So that's just one thing. And then are students aware that they don't have to take the SAT and the ACT? That they can go directly to a college and take their own placement test?
Well, the ACT is required of every 11th grader. So in the state of Colorado, every 11th grader has to take that. Students that are going to go out of state, sometimes they will take the SAT, but they take that on their own time and location. I think most students are aware that they could go directly to a community college and take the Accuplacer. And we have a large number of students who are taking an Accuplacer that ascertains their college readiness as well, which may be another piece that we fold into college and career readiness for some students to show. But every student has to take the ACT.
Because, just curious, if they don't do well on the SAT or the ACT and they go directly to the college, I mean, they may do better or worse or...
Well, I don't think there's ever been a correlation between the Accuplacer and the ACT. I do know, you know, my experience has been the more times a student takes any of those assessments, the better they get at them. So some kids will take the ACT as a sophomore or early in their junior year and then they'll come back and take the statewide assessment of the ACT in the latter part of their junior year and they'll do better. And so I don't think there's a connection between the ACT and the Accuplacer. Sometimes the Accuplacer, what they'll say is if you scored a certain level on the ACT, you don't have to take the Accuplacer coming into our college or university.
And the majority of research shows that while the ACT and the SAT are fine gatekeepers for entry into college, they are not great predictors of staying in college, grade point average and your, which, what course-taking you had in high school and the performance you had in those courses are much greater predictors of how you perform in college and stay in college.
And Dr. Morgan, just to follow up on that point too, one of the things you mentioned was the application versus the knowledge base regarding ACT, right? We were talking about that a little bit earlier. And so I think that's a really important point too, just for us to think about in this broader conversation. When we, when we talk about those work-related skills in terms of critical thinking, you know, both college and career-ready skills, right? Critical thinking, collaboration, teamwork, analyzing information, making sense, communicating, perhaps through writing, and looking at different ways that we measure those skills. And I would imagine also a caution to the board that we don't want to place all of our eggs in one basket like the ACT or some other measure for that, for that purpose. We want to look at a variety of data points as we think about this.
You're stealing my thunder from the next person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
No, I'm kidding. That's exactly what we'll talk about in the landscape of assessment world.
Thank you.
Is the district paying for the SAT or the ACT? Or is the family paying for that?
The state pays for the administration of the ACT to all 11th graders. Anyone that wants to take the SAT, they're on their own and the family would pay for that.
And I'm just curious about the value of that because if only 6% of our special education students are proficient in math, how is the ACT going to help them? I mean, isn't there something more appropriate for them to be taking? Or same thing with the free and reduced lunch kids? I mean, if only 19% of them are proficient? I mean, should we be looking at that by a student by student as to whether it's, you know, if there's a better assessment for them to help them move on to their next part of life?
The ACT does have an alternative for students that are eligible based on their IAP. With that said, I would agree with you that there should be multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate their readiness for their aspirations beyond high school.
Okay. And then my final question is, as a district, how are we distributing resources to make sure that the population of students in the most needs for certain types of curriculum are receiving that?
From now forward?
Yes.
You, if the presentation around the student-based budgeting, so we will have a base, student-based budgeting that goes to schools. And part of that includes the at-risk funding. And so schools who have higher at-risk students would receive more funds. In the ongoing phasing of that process, we will also be moving special ed funds as part of that student-based budgeting. So schools that are more highly populated with special ed students in the different ranges of their learning disabilities would also be able to have those funds available to them to make those decisions. So they have the resources to make the decisions about the students that they are educating.
Do they ever have like a sharing library or, you know, something like that where multiple schools can share on that since many things are so expensive?
Absolutely.
And how is that information put out so teachers know what's available?
Well, so there's sharing across, part of the intent with the restructure of the achievement directors is that the district will be able to be a networking opportunity for those principals to know what are the resources that are working well? And then how can we share and how can we learn from each other? And how can we not have to continually look outside to be able to enhance the education? There are a lot of sharing of resources and I anticipate with student-based budgeting that will continue because if we are able to share specific resources, when we hit critical mass on a resource, then the district, we would want to be able to optimize, you know, scale. So if we have 40 districts that are using the same resource, if we purchase it as a district, we will likely get a much better cost for it. So we will be very attentive to the fact that we want to make sure that the schools have access to the resources they want and we are able to optimize and save taxpayer money as we can in areas of purchasing them broad-based. We will not be purchasing a resource for every student in the district if that's not a need a school has. So those decisions will be made in collaboration with the schools.
Ms. Newkirk? Just to dovetail off Ms. Williams' question, I wonder if you might talk to us a little bit about JFCO's priority improvement and turnaround schools and what we're doing to make sure these schools are going to get out of those categories.
Some of the schools have gone through CDE diagnostic grants, which is a process where a team goes in from CDE's... where a team goes in from CDE's list of consultants, and they analyze the environmental scan of the building, talk about all the components of improvement, and then have recommendations on what that school can do to improve. And it doesn't stop at just a one-week analysis. Then they move into additional resources to talk about now, how do you use that information from the diagnostic and actually implement it throughout the year. We have several of our turnaround and priority improvement schools that have gone through that work with CDE. We also have the work with achievement directors to bring in resources, and some of our title schools are also the same schools that might be priority improvement or turnaround, and they have additional resources as well, where they're matching their needs based on their UIP, where they look at what are our root causes, then what are our major improvement strategies, and then how do we align our resources in order to make a difference?
And one of the things that we will do in collaboration with the School in Innovative Effectiveness Department is really look at, are there barriers in certain structures where the school needs to have an opportunity to be, have some kind of transformation to be able to address the needs of their students? So, is there a structure that needs to change as far as design or delivery? We have students who are schools that have been in priority improvement, and they will be able to tell us the root causes and the system. If the system is a barrier, then we need to remove system barriers so that they're able to do the changes that are necessary. So, when we get to that level of decision-making, then that decision-making comes to a partnership between the school and central leadership, because those transformations can be pretty significant.
Ms. Delk?
Just one quick follow-up question about system barriers, and then also a question about charter school achievement. Could you share a couple of examples of what some of those system barriers might be and how we tackle that as we talk about turnaround schools or priority improvement? And then, we also know that parents want to make sure that they find the right fit for their child in terms of a school, neighborhood school, charter school, option school, whatever might work the best. Can you also tell us a little bit more about student achievement in our charter schools and what that might look like?
So, to answer your first question, so, an example might be if I'm a high school, and part of the barrier that is occurring is that we require students to be in school for a certain number of days in a calendar that requires a certain number of hours a day. But if these students are students who are having to work, and so, their attendance and their ability to be in school is inhibited because they have to work, that's just the reality, then would we be able to extend a school year so that those students would still get the instructional hours they need and the credit hours they need, but be able to accommodate their, the way that they have to attend to their life, their work life as well? So, that would be one example of being a bit more innovative and flexible in the way that we're looking at a calendar year, or we're looking at a school day, and really thinking about what are other design options that we have to help students who, if we eliminate some of those system barriers, would likely want to continue and finish their education. That's one example.
That's really exciting work, I think, in terms of how the district rethinks design and how the system responds to ensure kids are successful and teachers have the support, and what does that look like? Are there costs, resources involved? That's really interesting work.
I was at an elementary school today, and the principal said, "We want basically this school to be open from 6:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock at night, because we serve parents who are working two jobs, who the students would benefit from an extended day and an extended year. The students want to be at school. The students are then able to have the meals they need." And he said that that resource would have to, there would have to be a resource consideration around if they're going to, his school basically serves as a hub to that community. They have a washer and a dryer. They have, it serves as a place where the community comes because they need that connection to resources that they, the parents come, and the librarian is continually helping parents before our school and after school apply for jobs and use the technology, because they don't have computers at home. And so, those kinds of, just redesigning a school to really meet the needs of that student and parent community, we can be really helpful and thoughtful in that way.
And then charter school, student achievement, any thoughts?
We have lists of all of our schools and the achievement of each school, and we can easily provide those. I think charter schools are just like all of our schools. They range in achievement.
And mirror what we see nationally as well, probably. Thanks.
Please do share that, broken out by school. A couple of questions that we haven't hit on that I'd like to get to. One is kind of the question that begs itself from the board goals, the district goals, which is moving third-grade reading from 80% proficiency to 85% proficiency. We marginally went the wrong way this year. I realize it's only one percentage point, but the underlying point is we haven't made progress yet. What would you do next to move that needle forward?
So, we're looking at a K-3 model. That would be the first step. So, making sure that we're aligning the learning expectations so that when students come into school at kindergarten, they're school-ready in the sense that they are, they have the academic language, or they have the scaffolding to be able to learn and demonstrate the academic language necessary to be able to become literate. And then, to actually have a clear learning progression of where they need to be on track from kindergarten to third grade. So, we would have a clear sense of who's on track and who's not on track, and then what are the instructional supports we have in place for the students who are not on track. So, those structures and those building blocks have been put in place the past year and a half through reconfiguring our efforts at early literacy, through the READ Act and through different efforts focused on K-3, and really being able to now clearly align the learning expectations and then the assessment of those learning expectations and not waiting for an annual look at that, but being able to track those frequently and adjusting instruction frequently to be able to get to the third grade and not be surprised if we haven't met our target. But we would know very well that we hadn't much earlier than...
So, I think the other thing to do is explore some of the partnerships that have been created. I mean, I know I've been involved with the J-Cell program, saw that this summer. I think there's been some great gains from that. At the last Jefferson Schools Foundation meeting, there was discussion of a partnership with Mile High United Way and a reading program that they're doing in some of our schools. It's getting some good results. So, seeing what would that cost if we wanted to scale that up and give that opportunity to building principals to be able to say, "Well, these are the interventions that I want to do in my school that fit my community. You know, I want to do this one. I want to do this one, and here's what the cost is going to be to do that." So, some of those promising practices are having some pretty high yields.
And if you would, and just one more, if you would go to the slide, or I can go to the slide. Take us to the slide. It's way back there. It's the one with the dibbles. One of the things that I want to point out is when we look at tracking the performance, is it way back there?
It's right after the acuity.
Oh, I passed it.
It's this many slides in.
Oh, all right. Slow down. Okay. So, if you look at the tracking of this, we noticed the transition between kindergarten and first. So, we would want to dig deeper into that, because if you look at the rest of the grade levels, from the beginning of the year benchmark, I mean, from the end of year benchmark of first grade to the beginning of the year benchmark of second grade, you'll see that the percentages hold steady. So, we're not losing ground during that transition. What we would want to know more about is why. And we have some predictions. I would say part of it would be how much kindergarten did a student get. But we would want to look at why. We look at end-of-year in kindergarten and then first grade, we're back up to 24% of our students are significantly behind in reading. So, when we talk about tracking, we're talking about tracking within a school year, but also tracking from year to year in those clear benchmark differentiations so that we're able to really catch students in time, not waiting for time to pass and then try to recover lost time.
Okay. And then, the follow-up to that question is, we did approve some early reading intervention funds last year. How are those being applied, and when would we see the results from that investment to understand what more and what else we need to do?
Right. And so, that was what I was sharing with Mr. Newark, Newark is about being able to, we can look at it one of two ways. So, that those intensive supports have been put into place through supports of direct instruction with students by literacy experts. We can look at their performance on the beginning of the year benchmark compared to last year. That would be something we could do in the near future, or, and/or, if you just love talking to us. We could wait until the middle of the year benchmark, and then we could show you the change in performance for a whole semester of that intensive support and what kind of significant increases have we seen from that. So, we don't have to wait very long. We could really get into that pretty early on by looking at beginning of the year to middle of the year benchmarks on the different various measures we have.
I'm anxious to see the benchmarking of the value of that investment and the return on that investment. Thank you.
And with the math program as well.
Dr. Morgan, I want to come back to something that you said as you were talking about the data on this graph, that you want to know when you look at how much kindergarten a student has received. Can you talk more about why that's important? And is it particularly important for kids on free and reduced lunch?
And that's, I mean, I don't know. That's why I look at that. And both of us went, "Hmm, we're going to dig into that data." So, we want, we just, we would, and we could absolutely share with you the results that we find, because that seemed, that's a significant jump. So, we would want to know more about...
This is not a matched cohort group, so that's important to note. We know that we have not the same students necessarily that are in our kindergartens that have come to us in first grade. So, those are not necessarily the same students, but that's something that we would have to dig into.
We want to know, for the same students?
Yes.
What was the gains? For the same students who had full versus half, for the same students who had, came in in first grade but had kindergarten somewhere else, but we just, we are interested. We like that stuff. We just really want to know.
Yeah. I think that would, I agree. And I am right there with you, and I think it would be terrific to have a more in-depth, complete picture.
And track all the way to the third grade number?
Yeah.
To see what the result was.
Absolutely. Well, we've had dibbles next.
Takes three years to do that. Go back.
Not dibbles next. We had dibbles, the prior dibbles, and then moved to dibbles next. So, I'm not sure if it's going to be the measure that we can track over time, but we can certainly look at.
Track back as far as we've been using it. And then, acuity as well.
Thanks.
Ms. Williams, did you have another question?
No, thank you.
Okay. We're right at time here. I think this is probably the perfect place for a five-minute break, and then we'll come back with assessments.